Mr. Yevchevich, Mr. Adler, Mr. Banks.
Yes.
Mr. DeFalco.
Present.
Mr. Jones. Mr. Parker.
Um.
Ms. Saucier. Ms. Savage. Mr. Stafford.
Here.
Ms. Green.
Here.
This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter two thirty-one, covered laws nineteen seventy-five, certification of this notice is on file in the office of the township clerk. Advance written notice of this meeting was posted on Bolton Board. Human's building was mailed to Burlington County Times, was filed with the clerk of Mount Holly Township, and was mailed to all persons who requested an appeal for such notice. Please rise for the public.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, tonight, our chair, vice chair, are not here, so we have to have an election of a temporary chairperson. Do we have anybody to make a motion for a temporary chairperson?
Make a motion for Mr. DeFalco to be temporary chair.
For a second.
Second.
A motion, a- a- any other nominations, a motion to close the nominations for temporary chairs?
Uh, also a motion, uh, for the vice chair as well.
Any nominations?
Yeah. I'll make a motion to be the vice chair.
You don't hate yourself.
I'll second that.
All right.
Any other nominations? Mo- motion to close, oral motion to close the nominations?
Motion to close.
A second.
Okay. And all in favor of closing the nominations? And then a vote on the actual nominations for Mr. DeFalco and Mayor Banks as temporary chair.
Temporary chair.
Chair. Would you roll call on this?
Mr. Banks?
Yes.
Mr. DeFalco?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Stafford?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
All right, I'll now turn the meeting over to chairperson DeFalco.
Thank you, Jill. Um, number three on the application list, we have new business, this is application twenty twenty-two dash five, with the set location four hundred Mount View Avenue. Application is applicant is a Newman E. Woodson, four hundred Mount View Ave., Mount Holly. Application is requesting a D-one variance to permit the existing dwelling to be utilized as a duplex for rental purposes.
Mr. Chairman, for the board's reference and for members of the public who may be attending the meeting, the applicant has requested to adjourn, uh, the hearing on that application. It is for a use variance, and they're entitled to request a full seven-month eligible member board. Um, we unfortunately only have five eligible members tonight, so they asked for an adjournment, uh, without, and they told the time for the board to act, um, requesting that, uh, we make this announcement that if anybody is interested in this application, it will be adjourned until the March, I apologize.
March twentieth.
March twentieth meeting without further notice or publication. So if anyone is interested in that application, it will be heard at the March twentieth meeting, and you will not be subject to any further notice in the, in the future of the case.
Thank you, Lou. With that being said, is there a motion to adjourn application twenty twenty-two dash five until three twenty twenty-three? That's requested applicant?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Banks?
Yes.
Mr. DeFalco?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Stafford?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, rolling into, we have on the agenda of our public hearing regarding the township's fair share plan of housing for the Mount Holly Township Master Plan. Um, we did just receive the other day the, um, ERI, um, update and response, uh, to this, and with that being said, the time it takes to review this, uh, the current board hasn't had an opportune time to review it, and yet discussing with the, um, uh,
Planner.
The planners listed are, it's recommended that we, um, postpone this until such time that we have a date in the future to, uh, publicize the public hearing for this.
Hopefully it will be on for the March thirtieth, uh, meeting, but we'll renotice it, um, advertise it, and make sure that the plan is, uh, available with the clerk's office, and then that members of the board have enough time to fully digest it, and will be able to present testimony to Mr. Fox. I don't know if you want to even, I don't know what you want to do, whether you want to do quite a quick overview, even though this is not a hearing at this point.
Yes. Uh, well, in case, uh, I perhaps should introduce myself, be sworn in, and get to talk about it.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this board?
I do.
And this is Ed Fox, who's a recognized professional planner, um, was with the county planning board, I believe, and has testified before many boards prior, so I think the board is well served in recognizing Mr. Fox as a, an expert in professional planning.
Thank you. Well, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much, uh, for tonight's, to talk about this. Um, what we're doing is trying to complete, um, a fair share plan, uh, as part of a housing element, a fair share plan, because, um, there's been a suit for the township by the Fair Share Housing Center, and some others, uh, basically, uh, because they wish to be able to build or have the opportunities to build some affordable housing in the township. The township, um, has been working with Fair Share Housing and different property interests to try to identify some inclusionary sites. And inclusionary means that at least, uh, twenty percent of the housing would be available and deed restricted for low and moderate income housing, uh, households. So, uh, the last time that you all got together, or was on this, was last summer, and the township, uh, had a, a hearing before court, uh, before Jean, Judge Dean Covert, and there was a court master, and the court master is the official planner that the judge refers to, uh, to make sure everything is set up to snuff and procedurally well. That's, her name is Mary Beth Lonigan, uh, from the firm Clark, Cape and Hens. So there was a July fifth, uh, twenty twenty-two set of conditions. There were like nine different conditions, uh, that had to be fulfilled, you know, fix up, tweak this plan, make sure it works right. I won't go through all of them, uh, but I would like to go through some of them that are substantial. You may have heard about them, and the township council has been voting on some of these to implement them, so this is bringing it all back together again. Okay? So, um, the, if I can just go briefly, if you take your hand out here and turn to page forty-two, you'll see a map, color map there. And the basis of what we're going to be talking about tonight, and I'm going to time myself, and I will be done by seven thirty, and you can stone me if I'm not finished by then. The township had worked with, um, the different property owners and fair share, uh, on four target sites that would have a overlay zone that would allow, under certain conditions, the development of lower and moderate income housing, uh, twenty percent with affordable. And the density would be at twenty units per acre. So these sites here would be, uh, basically, uh, multifamily dwellings. To go over them just briefly, if you look at Site A, which is in the, uh, south central part of the township, that's on Holman Avenue, it's in a former industrial site, it's along the railroad tracks. Uh, Site B is in Mill Race Village area, it's Twenty Church Street, it's an old, uh, I think it's the Eagle Foundry, I believe it was, uh, also next to a park. Letter C is properties that are between, uh, Route thirty-eight and South Avenue. Uh, that includes, um, there's some vacant land back there, and there might be some other folks that are interested in, um, selling their property, because this might be more income-producing, having mixed-use development and affordable housing than, um, what they currently uses in there. And the last one, D, is on Mammoth Road at the edge of town, and that, there's two properties there, and one of them is a church, but they have lots of land that could be developed in, in, uh, back there, uh, if, if it's possible to do. So, from the July fifth report, I'll just go over the, uh, the things that have changed. If you go to page thirty-four on the report, and these are the, some of the conditions. And what I'm going to do is talk about those items that are highlighted in yellow. Okay, so one of the conditions was that the court master wanted to know whether there was enough water and sewer capacity to take care of these four sites. So I had to reach out to the MUA and also to New Jersey American Water Company to find out if there were. Um, and the, the situation is basically, yes, there's enough water to do that. However, uh, in terms of sewer, there is a little bit of problem on Site C, which is the site that's along, um, you know, South Avenue and Route one thirty and, uh, excuse me, Route thirty-eight and Pine Street. Sewer system pretty bad, pretty bad shape, it's an old sewer system, and the MUA says that they could be repaired by inserting, uh, some, uh, epoxy or so that can be cured in place. And it would be a, a moderate cost that would be roughly, uh, nineteen hundred dollars per unit. That's if they don't dig up the, the street to replace all the pipes. If they do, it's going to be kind of expensive. And that cost would be borne upon the housing developer, not upon, divided up upon all the other people down the line. They're causing the problem, the developer, and that's the cost. And that's a reasonable cost for attaching a sewer, so I don't see that as a problem for Site C. Uh, the next area to talk about is on page, uh, thirty-five, and this is the third condition. This, all this revolves around, um, Site A, that's the one on Holman Avenue along the railroad tracks in the south central part of town. Uh, to make a long story short, this site was identified, uh, for, um, redevelopment, and, um, it's contaminated. We thought it would be con- uh, remediated by now, they've been working with NJDEP for a while, and, uh, after speaking with the, uh, the, uh, the LSRP, which is the Licensed Site Remediation Professional, and LSRP is basically knighted by DEP to be a private agent to, um, fix everything for DEP instead of getting a year or two at DEP, they can do it in a couple of months with an LSRP. And speaking with the court master, they indicated that, uh, this would be a nice site to include in the future, but because it doesn't look like it's going to be ready, you know, within a year, we're not going to consider it, but keep it, you know, in the fold in case it's necessary in the future. Not such a bad location, pretty good if it were cleaned up. So they wanted in condition three to analyze all the different contamination sites, and if you look on page thirty-eight, uh, you look at the map and all the, uh, the hatch drawings, these are the areas that have to be excavated, uh, the soil taken out for a certain distance and then put back in. That's in addition to the twenty-five monitoring wells that they have, and they're also going to be required in that block, and the block next to it, no, no private wells. There's a, an underground plume of contamination that, um, we shouldn't be tuck, tapping out from that area. Uh, the next conditions are just, uh, some minor things, and they relate to some ordinances that have been put together, which we'll talk about a little bit later. Um, the next part I want to go to is, let's see, on page forty-four, one of the conditions was, uh, on number five on page forty-four, you'll see the yellow there. One of the conditions that the court master required was that the township had to have a resolution and a contractor with, uh, a corporation that is going to be a, uh, administrative agent for the affordable housing. You all had one, uh, the contract, uh, there was a one-month lapse in the contract. Uh, the township council approved a new contract, uh, that was by Resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-two on January twenty-third, they just need a copy of that document, and they cross that one off there.
And, and if I can intercheck, that is a common, um, feature for these affordable housing plans, is you do have an agent. So all the towns that have these, um, provisions, all have their own private agents, that's what the, the setup requires.
Right, so there's going to be a municipal liaison, that's probably your township manager, Josh Brown. Uh, but Mr. Brown's doing all sorts of things, he can't be responsible for everything, and, uh, these people and the, the contract that the council has is with a group called CGPNH, Community Grants Planning Housing, uh, they're very successful, they're one of the, the best in South Jersey, so they'll be well, uh, skilled with them, they have, they'll be in charge of the spending plan, uh, advertising and finding people for affordable housing, and giving the, uh, the, uh, monitoring courts every year to make sure that everything is being followed up to snuff. So it's, it's, that's the team that you're going to be working with, the township council, to make sure that everything's going smoothly. So you're in a good step there. Uh, if you look on page forty-five and forty-six, uh, that's all the contamination stuff. If you look on Site A, and if you look at the next page, uh, forty-seven, that's what Site A looks like from the air. So this, you might remember this site, this had a fire maybe about ten years ago, right? It was a big factory. And, uh, not so great, there's more contamination, uh, discussed in, uh, on page forty-eight. So basically, uh, there's a sentence on page forty-eight that says, because NJDP has not yet approved the Licensed Site Remediation Professionals Report, the township can't verify or determine at this time whether that contamination, once it's remediated, would, uh, impede residential development. So, uh, our firm, and, and we're representing to the board and for the township, uh, council, we can't guarantee that this can actually be remediated for, um, housing, because that's some of the cleanest stuff you have to do. It could be remediated, for example, for industrial development, which would be less, um, less expensive, but right now we're just going to hold it in place for now. Uh, that's site, uh, all these sites, these four sites are going to be zoned for twenty units per acre, so you're basically going to be getting three or four-story buildings, maybe with some parking or half-parking on the first floor, and we'll talk a little bit about the, um, the zoning for those, these four sites. Uh, the next site to look at is, uh, on page fifty-one and fifty-two. And this is called, this is the, I guess, the Eagle Foundry on, in the Mill Race Village. One of the issues that the, the, uh, the court master had was, this used to be a whole bunch of little lots, and it was hard to find who owned which lots, and that, all these little lots are on page fifty-one, so they were consolidated, they put together, so the court master wanted to verify that was the case. And this group Thirty Church Street owns, uh, Lot fifty-two, that's the big, uh, place where the mills are, and Lot thirty-three, which is, um, which is grass right now, I guess. And, uh, there's some, a few houses all along Monroe Street, um, that would be included, uh, in this site, which, that could be found there, it's just an opportunity, each one of these sites as a overlay zone that if that developer or owner wanted to, and if they met the criteria, they could build some affordable housing, multi-family housing. On Site B, uh, let's go to page fifty-four, this is, this is the thing that you're going to be most involved with tonight. Okay, so you all have been to Mill Race Village and know the concept of what's been trying to go there. Mill Race Village neighborhood is a mixed-use neighborhood, you can have residential uses, and you could have commercial uses, entertainment uses, things like that. However, it doesn't really permit a mixture of uses, one on top of the other. And so what this does, it allows, um, mixed-use development with commercial and other uses on the ground floor if there are residential uses above, uh, at the density of twenty units per acre. This site could also, remember if you have an overlay zone, you can choose this if you want to, but you don't have to. Right? So if somebody just wanted to build, uh, townhouses, which is, that's, they could, but if they wanted to do this, this is what they can do, and this is what was worked out, uh, with, uh, Fair Share Housing and the property there. On page fifty-four, uh, Site B would allow multifamily dwellings, but on the first floor, eating and drinking establishments, retail sales, offices and services, exercise, fitness, wellness, education, licensed daycare facilities, and a variety of arts and cultural uses. I did put on, uh, F-three, if you see there, it says excluding public performance venues. Why did I put that there? Uh, I remember when the building right sto- next door used to be, was that the Opera House?
Movie theater.
The movie theater, yeah. This is where your public venues should be, in my opinion, downtown, because it fertilizes everything around here. The, the concern I had that there was a public performance space in, uh, the Eagle Foundry was that there'd be a whole bunch of people coming to an event, which would have a whole bunch of cars that aren't really there, uh, supposed to be there, and then you'd have to have a vacant parking lot to put all those cars there, and you're just wasting space. This is where all the downtown parking is, it's a great place to have venues, so that's, I, I just, I would recommend that you discourage public performing spaces there. Uh, I've been in, the, the major landowner for this is the Wenzingers family, and I have conversations, you should know, with their attorney, David Frank, who's okay with most of these things, however, I have known some attorneys to argue, uh, and to labor points, uh, he wants to have public venue spaces down there, or have the opportunity to. I disagree, but that's, that's your choice. That was, this ordinance, however, with these uses, was adopted by, uh, the township council at the beginning of this year, so this, these are the uses that are approved there. So the, it went out, it was advertised, there was no opposition to this ordinance, so this is what we have for this site here. Uh, this is one of the few, this is the only place where mixed-use development is allowed. The other places, uh, which are mostly in residential uses, remember I've mentioned one of the sites, Site D, is some open space behind a church, well, we don't really want commercial uses on the ground floor there, that would just create multifamily housing. And the other site on Holman Avenue, we don't need to drag a whole bunch of commercial uses out the edge of town there, multifamily housing, so this is the place that would have mixed uses, which is consistent with their zoning that they have. Uh, Site C, if you look at page fifty-seven, there's Site C, which doesn't have, I wasn't able to find an updated aerial that had, uh, the drive-through restaurant, which I can't remember, it's Colby's, Colby's Drive-Thru Restaurant? So when this site was added for, uh, an opportunity site for affordable housing, that Colby site was available for development, it's not anymore. However, if you look at Lot eighteen, which is the rear property of the church that's at the corner, that might be available for, uh, development, or perhaps, I guess it's Ocean Wave Tent Rental, which is in the middle of the block, that might be, they might decide that it would be more profitable to go for affordable housing, uh, excuse me, inclusionary housing there. But that's that site, and, uh, because, uh, that site is at high ground, and everything goes downhill towards the crypt from there, um, this is the site where the MUA is concerned that if more units were put there, there could be a problem with the pipe, the sewer pipes. So they've expressed caution with this and suggested ways of curing the sewer pipes in place, which are vitrified clay, it's basically glazed terracotta, uh, and curing it another way. So that's Site C. Uh, there's, there's some contamination on Site C, uh, I think it's related to a dry cleaning business, so it's, it's groundwater, it's not soil contamination, and so there's some monitoring sites on there, and that site, if it were developed for inclusionary housing, would have, um, a deed restriction or exclusion that you couldn't put private wells there. The last site is Site D, which is on page sixty-three, uh, you'll see the color map there. Lot Branch Avenue, and, um, I guess we're branch turns at the Mammoth Road. So again, this site, if available, if the church or the other property owner wishes, uh, they could build according to the ordinance up to twenty units per acre with at least twenty percent of affordable housing. There's no environmental issues on that property that's eligible to be done. So those are the four sites, and what the court master wanted to do was meet and, uh, you all to answer all these questions to make sure that these are realistic identifiable sites. And speaking with Mary Beth Lonigan and her, eh, uh, Site A is, we're going to just take that off the table for a while, we're going to know that there might be some extra costs, uh, for Site C, that's the one on Route thirty-eight, the sewer pipe. Uh, Site B, which is the one in Mill Race Village, um, that's the one where the property owner, the major property owner, asked to have mixed-use development to, you know, jazz up that neighborhood and liven it, which is, which has been going on for the past twenty years, and D, uh, should be no problem.
A quick question for you.
Yes.
Um, as pertains to the Mill Race Village.
Yes.
Uh, s- site, I know you mentioned on F-three that you were, um, stating the exclusion of public performance venues.
Yeah.
Um, but in thinking about it, um, you know, you have their allowable for the museums, libraries, et cetera, would it be something that we would be able to address with a stipulation on specific size of venue? Because if you.
You can always amend this.
A museum or library is similar, we have the same property requirements as a venue that would have the same size for footage.
I, I think you're right, uh, that's something that we should address in the future. I would, for example, someone could say, a public performance is a book reading in the library.
Right.
Uh, that's not the intent of it. So, uh, the wording in here is not as specific as it could be, you're absolutely right. May I suggest that, uh, as we get closer to, after we get our ducks in a row and the judge approves this, that we tweak that, and also, I imagine that developer will want to have a redevelopment plan, right? And that's where you, you catch everything in the redevelopment plan. Okay, but that's a very good point, I'll, I'll bring that to, um, the court master when she, uh, might meet with her next. And, let's see, what, the last page? That is, most of the changes, the rest are technical in nature. If we go back to the cover letter, uh, which is that one page here, the cover letter says, um, there's different appendix, appendices, this document is like two hundred pages long, you're just seeing like seventy-five pages long. There is one appendix where we need a, the, the resolution of those cu- the current, correct resolution, I don't have that yet, I just have the old resolution, not the new one, so I've been working with Mr. Brown on getting that. And we may to need, we may need to amend that ordinance twenty twenty-three dash one due to some language issues. Um, there was a sentence in there that the court master wanted to change, uh, it's on number, number two here, but basically, the, the, the language that was adopted said that at least fifty percent of the affordable units had to be family units, which means not deed restricted to senior citizens. The agreement that's worked out in the settlement agreement with Fair Share Housing says all of the affordable housing will be family units. So this like, this clarifies it a little bit for me. And that's the arrangement that the township, uh, attorney and, um, and the township council have been working on. So, I, um, I spoke with the township, excuse me, with the, uh, the court master today, Mary Beth Lonigan and her assistant, who's Elaine, uh, Klizem, today, and they understood our situation, which is my, my situation, which is I did not pick this up and do it as quick as I possibly could. The schedule that we had in order to make a, a court master hearing in May is very tight, and it didn't allow for ERs, I had an ER. And some of these are very complicated things, especially, uh, getting information, uh, regarding the sewer and the information regarding the, um, contamination of the site. On another matter, that, you should keep your eyes on that, that site there, uh, just to mention to the council people, because, uh, that's something to work on in the future.
Can I intercheck as to the process? Just, just for, um, the mayor's reference and for reference of the board, first of all, the, the lawsuit by Fair Share Housing is not unique to Mount Holly. This is, um, a part of New Jersey's Affordable Housing Initiative that has been ongoing for thirty years statewide. And there are several rounds, I think we're into the third round, of compliance with various court orders and plans to make and maintain all of New Jersey as a, as a place, as a state that has of, access to affordable housing. Probably know friends or have read about the lack of affordable housing in places like San Francisco, Manhattan, and places like that. So, I mean, I mean, New Jersey has sort of been criticized, but it has been ahead of the game. So, I mean, I mean, New Jersey has sort of been criticized, but it has been ahead of the game in that we've had this initiative for over thirty years. So this is the third round of what they call compliance, and, and this is an ongoing initiative. So Mount Holly is not unique as far as, as being sued as part of this. It's a, it's a, it's a joint initiative, if you will, because the governing body is interested in providing and ensuring there's access to affordable housing. With respect to, Mr. Fox is very gracious in terms of talking about his error. The, the court sometimes puts forth these deadlines, and they, because they want to move forward on compliance. And I did receive sort of secondhand an email with some of the timelines, and, and I thought that they were very, very tight, because they required ten-day turnarounds for something that's very, very complicated. And, and when I looked at that, I thought, gee, that's awful difficult. And I thought that this is not unusual to, to have an extension of, of that. So for members of the public, this is not something that, you know, should be rushed, and they wanna get it right. And I, I'm confident that the special master and Judge Covert will support that, that the township has a good, solid affordable housing plan for this next step of compliance, and that there's a thorough review. And this has some oddities in some of the sites, like the environmental issue, which is rather unique, and makes the formulation of a plan a little bit more difficult. So I just wanted to give members of the board sort of that background, so that you know.
The towns, for example, the towns around here that is in Suter, West Hampton, East Hampton, Mount Laurel, Lumberton. Except South Hampton Township, which likes to roll dice a little. I'm their defender too. Are you happy to answer any questions here, or if you wanna email me? They ask me offline or so, jokingly providing my email address and stuff like that. I anticipate hearing back from the court master on these issues. I spoke with Elaine, as I mentioned, her assistant. She had about sixty different technical issues to fix in here. She said she thought I found all of them. That's why there's a whole bunch of yellow in here. And with the abundance of caution, considering there's so much yellow in here, that's why I'm gonna wanna do this hearing again in the future. But I just wanted to, I see heads nodding. I, I talk very fast because I'm one of four boys, and you gotta talk fast. Any questions?
None for me.
None for me. Appreciate your, I'll explain everything right now.
Okay, with that, I think you said, we'll go right into the matters represented by the public, or the members of the public who wish to speak during this evening. Roar, Lewis, David, David Addis.
Lewis, open ninety-eight, Lewis Drive. How about get a copy of that pamphlet over there?
On this?
Yeah. Do you have any exit?
It's available for view, and I think if, if there are electronic copies, you would be able to.
So they contacted the town clerk, and there's electronic copies and paper copies there.
And what else I was thinking about, Richard Park, who's helping with everything. Thank you.
Question, Arlene, five for four ninety-four, Merrick Street. Uh, these units, are they maybe looking like the units that was formerly the Gregory's, where they have stores on the bottom, and it is four stories going down Wood Lane Road? Are we talking homes that children can play in, or are we talking condos where they really don't have anywhere to go?
Well, we don't have a developer.
Okay, but it's one of those things, we already have problems with our traffic on Brainerd. We have so many people talking about what's going on with our schools, and we're talking about more kids, more people, more traffic for an historic town. You're talking three and four stories in this town? I just, I mean, I understand affordable housing, I, I can't imagine with Lewis Drive and that, four hundred ninety-five thousand dollars for those townhouses, I can't imagine what, what our housing rate is now, what is affordable? What is considerable, considered affordable? And it, it's just, it's mind-boggling to think of these type of units possibly coming in. I mean, it was nice to hear that it's gonna take a while, it's gotta go through the courts, but we are in a historical town. It, it's an atrocity to go down Wood Lane Road and see those little homes there, and that four-story building there. I'm, I'm concerned about the quality for our children. I'm, I'm concerned about our schools. I'm concerned about our traffic, our roadways, and it's just getting worse. I just, you know, I just really hate to see the charm of Mount Holly going to builders and whatever else. I mean, I wish I had the money to sue. I wish I had the money to sue that I could keep Mount Holly the way it is. Because this, this scares me. And maybe ten, fifteen years down the road, and it's just hard that we have tax abatements and we have everything else, and I've been a taxpayer here for a long time. And it just, I just hate to see the quality of, of Mount Holly go down. It's been a beautiful town. Everybody tries to keep it the way they can. Maybe I'm getting too old, but I just can't see three- and four-story homes beautifully up on, on, well, I know it can't go on Holman. I, I know what that building's like, I know what that apartment is like. I just, I just can't imagine the traffic flow and what we're becoming down here.
If you don't mind, I'm not gonna go through all your things, but.
No, go ahead, please.
What do you think of the Lake Supplyance Building?
Which one? The, the turbines, that they, they were able to put another floor up there? I don't, I don't know how that could happen on a, on a mill that there's, that that totally was just empty, all the way down to studs. I never got involved with that. It, it, it looks, it's fine where it's at, it was just one more story.
That's three stories of, I think it's twelve.
Right.
Twelve-foot floors.
Right, they added another story. Didn't even know that was gonna happen until it started to happen. But we're talking a lot more going on. At least that building was there. Now you're talking about adding more buildings. And I don't know how many children are in there, but I, I'm concerned about our, our schools, and we're, we're gonna put these kids to play. They don't need to be inside a house or a condo or an apartment. They should be out and have a quality of life that our children all have.
Thank you.
Any of the public this evening? Not seen none. Any matters represented by the engineer?
Uh, I have to go.
Lou, anything?
No, thank you.
Any member of the board wish to speak this evening?
I just have one thing. I'm gonna reach out to Professor Bill tomorrow. Well, by the end of the week, we have several big applications in already, and see, get on track to what we can get on the agenda for next month. Especially if we're gonna have this public hearing, but I'll reach out to you tomorrow.
Generally, these public hearings don't take that long.
Okay, I think I don't.
I've.
But we do have a couple of big ones.
We had the opportunity to go through this document with you all, to go through everything, so at the next meeting, perhaps we'll just have, I can make a, a map for the public of, you know, showing those four sites and just talking about.
Chris Haynes? Is there motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.